Call to order the regular meeting of the school board for Monday, May 12th, 2025. First item is the pledge allegiance. We'd ask you to stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One A, the reading of our school board meeting norms. Mr. Clevin.
Be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation in conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, and advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Item two, the approval of our agenda. I would seek a motion to approve tonight's agenda. It's been moved by Mr. Palmesino. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Clevin? We'll take a roll call vote.
Manley?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Flynn is absent. Lund?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
HS zero no one absent.
Motion passes. Item three, celebrating success. Century Elementary School, Dr. David Saxburg and team, take it away.
Good evening. Sincere thank you to the school board for taking a little chunk out of your time for us to be able to present and share with you about Century Elementary School. I'm David Saxburg. I'm principal at Century, and with me I have...
Hi, I'm Chelsea Binkie. I'm the associate principal at Century.
So, the four areas we're going to talk about will be our demographics, our ELA and math analytics. We want to share some information on our attendance, our PBIS SEL, and then we'll finish with celebrating some of our successes. Our vision is aligned directly with the Grand Forks Public School District's vision. It's very, the wording is actually the same, where we provide diverse and meaningful experiences for all learners in a safe and supportive environment by fostering curiosity, inquiry, and innovation. We grow and learn together by embracing change and taking risks. Our mission is also the same, exactly as it is for Grand Forks Public Schools. The current mission, which I know the strategic plan is evolving and so on, so right now our mission is growing together to enrich the world. And besides mission and vision, we have beliefs. And the beliefs that we have for our school is we believe strong relationships in our school and community will result in developing connected, innovative learners grounded by strong character. The first section I want to share with you is who we are. Who is Century? And Century, of course, is our students, our parents, our staff, our community, all of those people that make who we are. On this slide, it says 486 students. As of this morning, we have 488 students, so that's an update. For our students, we have 23 general education classrooms. We're a four-section school, except for our fourth grade is three sections. Next year will be four sections K through five. In addition, we happily host, support, two setting C classrooms, serving students with autism, ASD. We also have one classroom that is unique to our district. It's the only classroom in the district that supports students with multiple needs. These are students who have high medical cares. In addition to academics, we are able to support them in our classroom with a teacher and multiple paras, and that's one classroom in the district. And then we have one multilingual classroom. Okay, more about us. About 23% of our students are on IEPs. Close to 60% of our students are low income. It's about 58 point something. I figured I'd round it up. 17% of our students are multilingual, which specifically would be 84 students right now qualify for ML services. I think it's also important for people to know and understand that 11% of our students are designated as immigrant or refugee status, and 3% are McKinney-Bento. I found this really interesting when we decided to try to figure out how many different languages are spoken at Century and countries of origin. This doesn't represent all the languages, but it gives a pretty good idea that we could readily determine that there are 25 different languages, home languages, that are spoken at Century Elementary School. And as far as countries of origin, again, I have 16. My, I am pretty sure there are more than 16, but it gives us a good idea just how diverse we are when it comes to countries of origin and languages spoken at Century. This next slide shows our population by ethnicity, and what I noticed right away when I look at this is Century is a minority majority. By that I mean, if you look at white, we have less students that are ethnically white than from other ethnicities. And you can see by our enrollment how that breaks down. Okay, next part is our ELA and math analytics. So, our goal for ELA, for be legendary, is we'll increase our English Language Arts proficiency from 38% from 2022-23 to 46% proficient or advanced by September of 2028, as measured on the NDA+, which is the new North Dakota State Assessment. Our outcomes, this would be the last few years, showing you by grade level how our students have performed on the NDSA. So, blue represents 2022, and of course, 2024 is gray, broken down by grade level for reading. When it comes to, okay, that, those are the results. What are the inputs? What are you doing as a school to increase student achievement? There's a long list here showing that we do a lot of hard work to try to attain higher achievement. And it all starts with the Tier One high-quality instruction for all students. Those that may need more than Tier One, we have MTSS interventions in place, that'd be for Tier Two or Tier Three. As you know, as a district, we have updated standards and proficiency scales, so we're able to better define what it is we want our students to know and be able to do. Our schedule is scheduled around literacy blocks and math blocks, I'll talk about later. In other words, our schedule is centered around literacy instruction and math instruction, and then everything else builds around it, because that's our priority. We have coaching and instructional rounds. That's essentially time for our teachers to be able to go in, observe other teachers, other classrooms, and learn from each other. Weekly, our literacy specialists and our coach, our instructional coach collaborates. We do data digs after each assessment. That's where our literacy interventionist, instructional coach, principals come together each grade level and look at the assessment data, how students are doing, and make any adjustments that are needed. That includes a progress monitoring. I was really happy that we were able to have eight of our classrooms pilot Witten Wisdom. That provided us the opportunity for representative from each grade level to have at least one teacher teaching Witten Wisdom this year, so our other teachers could learn from them. As you know, there has been a lot of professional development on Witten Wisdom, the Witten Wisdom curriculum. We do ALBA Reading Challenge that's organized by our librarian. Title One money that we're so thankful that we have, we hired two literacy specialists using some of our Title One funds, and ML, multilingual. We have two-point, I don't know the exact percentage, we have two full-time multilingual teachers. The third person comes over and helps throughout the week, and we have two paraprofessionals that help provide services for those students. So, those are the inputs. So, what are we getting as a result? Those are called the outcomes, and this is another way of showing you the NDSA data, broken down by student groups. So, the outcomes would be the state assessment, and the data we have is from 2022, 23, 23, and 24. And you can see the "all" in the lavender. This is for ELA. 38% of our students in 22, 23 were proficient or advanced. 23, 24 was 37. As you go across, now you can see how our student groups perform. It's important for us to not only know how "all" are doing, but how are we doing in individual groups? So, you can see from Asian all the way over to low-income IEP and ML students. Green indicates the score is higher than "all." Red indicates the score is lower. Now, besides the NDSA, we have the STAR test that we use, and where it says 24 Fall STAR CAT State Test Proficiency Predictor. That tells us what's the likelihood that a certain percentage of your students will be proficient or advanced on the state test. So, this past fall, 38%, the prediction was 38% of our students would be proficient, and in the winter, it jumped up to 41%. And then, again, across the board by groups, you can see how the fall score was compared to the winter, as far as the prediction that they will be advanced or proficient on the state test. Next, we have our math goals, and like ELA, for be legendary, our math goals are, our hope is we'll go from 42% proficient advanced from 22, 23 to 51% proficient by September of 2028, as measured by the North Dakota State Assessment, which is called NDA+. This will show you over the last few years how our students have done by grade level on the NDSA test from third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, from 22 through 24. So, just like ELA, we have math inputs, things that we're doing, and these are the highlights of what we do besides, of course, teachers teaching in the classroom, the curriculum. Just like with ELA, we have the Tier One instruction, where everyday math is our main curriculum. It's our go-to for teaching our Tier One instruction. As needed, we determine interventions for our students for Tier Two and Tier Three. Similar to ELA, we have the updated standards and proficiency scales. You can see there's a lot of repetition from ELA. Just like in literacy, our schedule is developed around a math instructional block. So, explain that a little bit more now that I'm to the math piece, plus I talked about ELA. Is on our master schedule, every, like first grade, all the first grade teachers teach ELA at the same time. All the first graders teach math at the same time. Second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, kindergarten, and so on. And the reason why we do that is it allows us to know the time that's available for interventionists to come and provide supports for students, in addition to or outside of that time. Like ELA, our instructional coach works with our staff for math. We've done instructional rounds also, like I talked about with ELA. Like literacy, we have math specialists, and you'll see in the bottom, we have two. Again, we use Title One money. We've determined based on our needs assessment that we wanted to prioritize hiring math interventionists with our Title One money to help with interventions as students need. They are involved in the data digs that we do with classroom teachers and our instructional coach, and they are at the MTSS meetings to talk about the interventions they're providing and provide progress monitoring. Here's that slide you saw that looks familiar as far as ELA. Now, it's math. Again, the same thing, that the top two rows would be the NDSA, how we did as a school overall, and then how we do by group. And then, the next two rows are the STAR CAT. What's encouraging for me on this slide, not just for me, but for staff and so on, is on the STAR Winter Predictor, you can see we have more arrows that are green versus red, so hopefully that trend will continue. So hopefully that trend will continue. Alright, section three is attendance, attendance and SEL. So our goal is for us to have an average daily attendance of ninety-five percent. That's our goal at Century, which you've probably seen at probably all the other schools. So how are we doing? The last three years, Century's in blue. The district is orange and the state is gray. So the last three years, we've been ninety-four, ninety-three, ninety-four percent. So not quite the ninety-five percent, but overall we've, our attendance rate has been higher than the state and district overall. Another term you hear about is chronic absenteeism. Essentially what that means is these are students who are absent at a high rate. That's just a real simple way of explaining that. Again, Century's in blue. The district's in orange and the state is in gray. So the the data I use for these last two slides comes from ND Insights, which is available through NDPI. Anyone who has access to internet can access this information. Okay, the next slide is information on attendance based on demographics. There's a lot going on on that slide. So I have, I wrote some notes here. Just to help break it down. Because the red looks like red three different times. The blue looks like blue, the green looks like green a couple of times. Alright, essentially you see, you'll see that first line, line of red. Those are our Asian Americans and it goes across from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-four last school year. Again, this this data is provided through ND Insights, through NDPI. It's available for every school. So you can see what the attendance rates are by, like I said, by demographics. I didn't, you can see gender, male, female, that didn't show up on there, but essentially by ethnicity. And then also by low income and so on. Anyway, I'll just go down the list here. So the next color, the next highest, if you will, across that goes straight across that, those are our students that identify as being white. The blue, that first blue, those are students identify as black. The next one, I'm not sure what color green that is. It kind of blends together. That'd be a native Hawaiian or Pacific Islanders. Then the following blue below it are Native Americans. And the the bottom two reds, the first red, those are our students on IEPs. And the last red, those are our students that are low income. So that gives us a better picture by demographics where our attendance is at. Instead of just looking at overall. Alright, so what do we do to help our attendance rates stay up? Get up, improve and so on. So we monitor our attendance. Essentially, if if not daily, weekly. Our social worker, she works very closely on monitoring attendance and if there are concerns. Communication with parents, just reaching out and checking in, how are things doing? We we meet as needed with families if we need to work on assistance or help. We don't assume that it's necessarily something they're doing wrong. Sometimes they just need some help or supports assistance to help with attendance. So that's that's important. We have worked with the district attendance specialist quite a few times to help us with any needs we have and that's been very helpful. When it comes to attendance, besides Power School, Panorama is very powerful in providing us the information, not only by student, but also overall by the school. And as I show you some more data, that's where I'm getting that from is from Panorama. At Century, our secretaries call daily. So they, after school started, they'll go on Power School, they'll download students that are absent. And if we haven't heard from that family, we make phone calls, every single family. We don't always hear from them. If we don't, we take notes. But that's our way of trying to just stay in touch with parents to make sure we know where know where students are. Excuse me. As needed, our social worker will do home visits. And as I said, kind of earlier, without being more specific, our social worker does work really hard, I will say, as far as breaking down transportation barriers to help students, families that are having difficulty getting to school. Alright, so how are we doing? This is way back in April. And part of it is I was prepared to present in April and you know, we're here in May, but. So this is Panorama. So as a principal, I can go on here and I can see the trend as you can see from September through April. Very interesting. We were pretty healthy, it looks like. And I can't assume attendance is all based on health, but a lot of it has to do with how our students are doing health-wise. From September to December, a lot of green. Then December hit, January, February, March, real tough, a lot of absences. Now, I you can see at the end there, it's popping back up in green. If I were to show you the one that goes through May, the green has spiked up again. So that is showing me that students are coming or attending at a higher rate than before. And actually, this is, so this says ninety-four point three year to date. We are now ninety-four point four percent. So we're slowly but surely inching up, hopefully to get to ninety-five. And our thirty day average is ninety-four point seven. So we're on the upward trend on students being in school. Okay. Alright, I mentioned Panorama. I promise Chelsea is going to talk. This data I have in front of you, I was able to get from Panorama. So it tells me the number of students that are attending at a certain percentage. And if you if you think about it, we always concerned about students not in school, but this also shows how many students are in school at a high rate. So two hundred and seventy-four of our students, fifty-six percent of them have attended ninety-five percent or more of our school days. And then you can go across and you can read the percentages and so on. And three percent, thirteen students, this would be in that chronic absenteeism that we we talk about. Including some of the others that are in the between eighty and ninety percent. Thirteen of our students have attended less than eighty percent of our school days. Those are the families that we would work with individually with our social worker. The district attendance person as needed to help with any barriers there may be and helping them get to school. Okay, Chelsea's turn.
Alright, so I'm going to talk a little bit about our PBIS and SEL. So our overarching PBIS and SEL goal is really about building community. We want our students to feel connected to their teachers, to connect connected to other staff in the building, to be connected to each other, to be connected to their classroom, because as that quote up there says, we know when kids are connected to their school. They participate in those positive behaviors and they are much more successfully academic. They're much more successful academically. So what are some ways that we do that? The first way is that we have school-wide expectations. So that's where that behavior matrix comes in. So our outlines really are be respectful, be responsible and be safe. And within each of those categories we've outlined, what does it mean to look respectful, responsible and safe in different areas throughout our building? And our teachers spend their time at the beginning of the year and throughout the year, teaching and reteaching. What does it look like to be responsible in the lunchroom? What does it look like to be safe in the bathrooms? What does it look like to be respectful on the playground? And then that gives us that common language schoolwide, so we're really all following those same expectations. And then that flow chart helps us determine who and what are the supports that we need for student behaviors when maybe they're not following those positive expectations. Our counselors provide classroom lessons for our students K through five. Our K through two focus is that emotional regulation. Our three through five is our sources of strength. We collaborate with CVIC. They are in our classrooms multiple times throughout the year, providing classroom lessons. And we also provide referrals for students and families outside of the school setting. We have student skill focus groups, so students who have some legging skills that they can work on those, building those skills with our counselors and our dean of students. We have monthly PBIS meetings, so we have a diverse group who come together every month to talk about what's going well PBIS wise in our building. What are some things we need to improve on? And then how are we going to go forward and implement that within our building? We have monthly assemblies as part of our PBIS group, just to celebrate all the really good things that are going on in our building. We have bounce back and anger coping student groups with our social worker and also our counselor, again, to practice some of those skills. Our teachers provide second step classroom lessons to help students build those SEL skills. Every classroom is provided a buddy classroom. They meet together at least once a month, once a month, sometimes more, just depending on how busy the month is. We have monthly school-wide community building challenges, so sometimes it's just within your specific classroom. Sometimes it's school-wide. I think in the month of February, we challenged each classroom to see how many Patriot Pride cards they could earn. And then the top three earners got to have a celebration. School-wide in April, we challenged students to a kindness challenge where every time they were caught being kind, they were given a raindrop because we wanted to flood our school with kindness. And then when we filled the bucket, we got to have a school-wide celebration. Also, building on that, excuse me, we have some community partnerships we have. So we also challenged students at one of our assemblies to raise or collect food for the food drive, which we donated to the Hope Community Food Pantry. We collected two thousand six hundred and forty-four items, which was pretty incredible to see. In December, we all participated in a pajama drive and collected eighty-seven pairs of pajamas to donate to the CVIC. And this fall, and again this spring, our dean of students worked together with Safe Kids to plan for a walk and roll to school day, which was just a fun way for our kids to come together, walking and rolling into school. As a part of our assemblies, we have minute to win it challenges to end each assembly. And we've tried to be unique in how we partner teachers and students together. So it might not just be the classroom teacher and a student within their classroom participating in those challenges, but maybe a fifth grade teacher and a second grade student or a paraprofessional who works in fourth grade connecting with a kindergarten student. So we've tried to be intentional with how we build community that way. So what are some ways that we can monitor how our students are doing? We use Power School data that helps us look at our behavior incident referrals. Panorama and HRS surveys, therapy referrals that we have, mentoring minute data. I'll talk about that in a little bit. That's something our counselor keeps track of. Our Patriot Pride Cards, I mentioned those earlier. That really is just our school-wide way to reinforce those positive behaviors that we see students participating in. Our goal this year is every student earns three Patriot Pride Cards. Our goal for next year will be five Patriot Pride Cards for each student. Teachers also pass out something called leader slips. Those are passed out a little bit more frequently and then there's also some kind of positive behavior system within their classroom for earning those slips. And just recaps that we have with our CVIC staff after classroom lessons are performed. So what is the data showing us? Well, the data is showing us really that ninety-three per students, ninety-three percent of our students are doing everything that they need to do every day to make sure that they're ready to learn. We have about seven percent of our students who we know need a little bit more support. And we have a system for supporting our students. We have our MTSSB process, which we can talk a little bit about on the next slide. So typically what happens is our teachers come to our team and say, hey, I need some ideas for how I can support this student within a classroom. And what are maybe some additional skill building opportunities that they might have? So as you can see outlined trimester by trimester, we've had about fifty MTSSB meetings for our students. And typically, what comes out of those meetings is we have some kind of supports in place for those students. So they could be supports that are occurring within the classroom, but they could also be supports that someone outside of the classroom is providing. So if you look on the left side, you can see that. Oh, I counted this up before and now it's not in my head anymore. Sorry, about seventy students have received tier two or tier three interventions, usually provided by our counselor, social worker, our dean of students. And if you kind of follow the trend, you notice how trimester one increases to trimester two and then declines a little bit in trimester three. The really exciting thing is we know that ninety percent of our students who have some sort of needs that they need supported by the end of trimester two are receiving either tier two or tier three supports. And this is back to that mentoring minute data that I talked about earlier. Our counselors really took it upon themselves. They looked at our fall panorama survey and they focused on one question. Do you have a teacher or other adult from school who you can count on to help you no matter what? And twenty-two of our students said, no, I don't have that. And so they determined who those students were and they really focused in asking volunteer staff throughout our building to focus one adult assigned to each student and follow a two by ten intervention. So throughout ten weeks, their goal was to meet with that student for just a minute, two different times and see if that impacted the student responses within their winter assessment. And so when we look, looked again at our panorama data, excuse me, that number decreased from twenty-two students to ten students. So twelve out of those twenty-two students changed their response from no to yes, that they do have an adult in our school who they can count on no matter what, which is huge gains. We know we still have a couple of students that we need to continue to reach, but that that was fun data for us to see. And then our counselors also have student self-referral slips. So outside each of their classrooms, they have little mailboxes that say, let's talk. And there has been fifty-one referrals for for that so far for our students to reach out and find another adult that they can talk to.
Okay, our last section is celebrating success. Just want to highlight some of the fun things we have going on at our school and some of the achievements that we are proud of. One of the, one of the activities that we have is Century Reading Week. We have a family engagement night. This is integral, integral part of our school-wide title one plan to involve families. And we have a reading night. You can see some of the pictures of parents spending some time with their their children. So that's that's reading. We, these have been going on a long time in Grand Forks, the red, red events. And at Century, it's phenomenal, it's really phenomenal how many parents that we have show up. It's from two thirty to two fifty, four times a year. The time is not ideal. We know that for parents that are working and so on. However, the commitment that our parents show, our grandmas and grandpas, aunts and uncles just come by sometime. There's, I came the other day after it had started. We had cars lined up on the street past Lion Park. Any, any place they could find a place to park, they did and they showed up and our building is always full. It's only twenty minutes, but it's really neat to see that our our parents want to spend some time with their kids, even if it's for twenty minutes. Have a little fun and we give away some free books.
All the time. I don't see it as a significant statistic as far as during the school year, students coming in and students leaving. I would say it's fairly average or typical. But what's been new for Century is just the students that we serve as far as, like I said, we had 430 and now we plan for 480.
Sure, please. Thank you, President Berger. This might be the last time that Dr. Sacksburg is in front of this board as he's going through a transition professionally. And just want to thank Dr. Sacksburg for his work over the years at Century Elementary School. Just a couple of specific notes about Dr. Sacksburg. If you drive by his building any weeknight after seven o'clock, after eight o'clock, he is still there. He's there doing the work. He's there doing the hard work. And there was a time over the course of the last seven years that I sat in a real difficult student IEP meeting with Dr. Sacksburg and his team. And there was a student, and I say in the last seven years, so the student can't be identified, where the student was receiving Tier Two Support Services and Special Ed Level C, needed more than Level D, likely needed an out-of-district placement. And Dr. Sacksburg did everything he could in his power in that meeting to hang on to that student. The best decision for that student was to be placed out of district in 24/7 attendance care. But what Dr. Sacksburg said at the conclusion of that meeting was, and we want him to come back. So when we talk about principals serving all kids with a capital A-L-L, that's Dr. Sacksburg. And I want to thank you for your service, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure. I had, sorry to take a little bit longer here, but I think it's a pretty neat story. So I student taught at Belmont Elementary School. Student taught fourth grade with Dave Mowen. Rest his soul. He was my supervising teacher. And not every day, but almost every day, he would kind of hum after we'd bring the students either to lunch or somewhere. He would always sing this. Would I do it all over again? Maybe. So my tune would be, would I do it all over again? Yes. So I would do it all over again. Being a principal has been the best job I've ever had. So thank you.
Item four on our agenda, the public comment period. I have not received any comment forms. Are there members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Five A under Superintendent's Recommendations for Discussion, Cognia Accreditation Report. I believe Dr. Galach will get us started. We might have a joiner by phone and some colleagues, but please take it away.
Yes. Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to present here from the mic because I sit a lot during the day, so this will help me stay present with you. So on the phone, we have Dr. Mark Volmer. Some of you may recognize his name as being a former superintendent down in Minot and a great state leader. He has taken on duties now under the Cognia Accreditation Review Team, and he travels across our great state and other states as well to conduct these reports. So he was our primary observer or the facilitator of this report, who's not here tonight, who was planning on being here the night that we intended to present, which is at the last board meeting, is Amy Ralke, Dr. Ralke and Ms. Barch. And those two were also instrumental in creating the processes that led to what's in front of you today and doing the great work and doing an awful lot of the writing. So first of all, I wanted to just quickly review what the purpose of accreditation is. So accreditation is required by the Department of Instruction of all school districts. Really, the purpose behind it is to make sure that districts are committed to the process of continuous improvement. And that can be a really big tagline that we want to continuously improve. That's why we have B Legendary Reports is because we're trying to incrementally increase our student outputs. And Cognia makes sure that we have the systems in place that can allow that to happen. The Cognia company itself is an external accreditation company, which provides us additional value because they don't have a bias. When we're up here looking at all the things, we're close to the work, and sometimes we might see some, not see some of the blind spots in our systems and that sort of thing. And so we find really great value in this process. It is a heavy lift. And I'll get into that in a little bit here, but we really appreciate the end result because it allows us to make sure that we are paying attention to evidence-based practices that will move the needle in the end on our student achievement. So last time we went under review, it was 2020, right before that great thing that we call COVID. And during that report, we received three indicators that we needed to improve upon from the Cognia Accreditation Review Team. They are listed in front of you. They included monitoring and adjusting instruction to meet learner needs. What I want to assure you of is that over the course of time, again, the B Legendary presentations, you've heard us talk about our multi-tiered support systems. You've heard us talk about how professional learning communities have advanced our work. You have talked, you're listening to the data in front of you. All of those things were a direct result of the initiatives that we were asked to put in place from the last Cognia review. Secondly, we were asked to implement processes that continuously assess our programs and our conditions for learning. The B Legendary work that's in front of you, although it was a result of our CSI efforts at Valley Middle School, it also has propelled us to make sure that we're really paying explicit attention to our data across the district. The curricular enhancements, you have one coming to vote tonight, that we're investing again in evidence-based programming to allow consistency across our buildings. The MTSS and PLC processes, again, are action steps that we took because of the last report in 2020. And finally, we were asked to improve our data literacy and systematize our initiatives and increase that fidelity of implementation, which means regardless of the school that you go to, you're having a similar learning experience. It's not the lottery, right? We want to have similar experiences. And we've really made investments through the CLSD grant, which is our Critical Literacy Grant, the instructional coaches, again, who have been in front of you and are, when it says CIA up here, Dr. Brenner Kottis, we're not talking about the Career Impact Academy that we're touring a little bit. We're talking about the curriculum, the instruction, the assessment department work. And that's not just work done out here, but that's work that then is led by our building leaders, led by our instructional leaders, our team leaders at the building level. So in order to prepare for our most recent review, it was really, like I said, quite a large lift. It was, you can see down in the corner there that self-assessment workbook, that's a 180-page workbook that Dr. Ralke, again, I have to give her a shout out, could probably recite to you in her sleep by now. She is probably our most expert leader in this Cognia accreditation process because she's been on the other end as far as conducting reviews in other districts. So her expertise has been invaluable. But really, what we did is we started this process last year because we knew that we needed to engage our building-level leaders. We knew that we were required to gather a large amount of data, evidences across the district, that would allow us to then take a look at what's happening systems-wide, not just buildings-wide. When Cognia came in in 2020, every building went through a process in which they did their own individual reports to Cognia. One of the big shifts that they had now is this is now a systems-level, a district-level process. But in a district our size and the number campuses that we have, it took some orchestration to bring all of that data present. And so we leaned on our building leaders and started the work last year through a series of meetings, through a series of collaborations, deconstructing all of the elements in that 180-page document so that our leaders understood what it meant to be a district that was committed to continuous improvement. There are four key characteristics that Cognia looks for. And another shift between the 2020 and this current accreditation review process is that the shift is to what the learner is doing in the classroom. So are we promoting a culture of learning? Are our leaders leading around learning initiatives? Is there engagement at the student level, at the teacher classroom level, around learning and learning improvements? And finally, are we seeing those outputs, the growth in learning? Our exit report, again, conducted by Dr. Volmer and his team of one additional person. They really synthesized all of the data that we provided them and came up with a whole slew of celebrations. And you can read that list up there. One of the things that I'm most proud of is that there was a genuine desire for continuous improvement that became evident. They spent time with focus groups of students, focus groups of teachers at the secondary level and the elementary level. They read through all of our evidences and our synthesis of those evidences to come to these conclusions. They celebrated our calendars, our B Legendary efforts, our data use, the way that we dug into data at the building level, and a whole slew of additional things. They talked to us about our success and how we have fiscally invested our dollars from grants and other funding sources towards instructional improvements, as we were guided to do in their last report. They talked about how the Panorama data and Dr. Sacksburg gave a shout out to that system that allows us to track the social-emotional investments, the attendance investments, as well as the academics. We know that those things tie together in achievement, avid efforts, which is about equity in the classroom, et cetera, et cetera. So lots of points of celebration. We also were recognized to have what's called a noteworthy practice. And what I understand, and again, Dr. Ralke explains this better than I would tonight, is that this is really not necessarily something that every district automatically receives. This is really, truly the highest standard and a point of celebration, that when it comes to our multi-level systems of supports, that indicator that you can see there, standard four and standard 24, when we're talking about that systemic way in which we respond when kids can't learn. And that is evidenced by Tier One instruction in the classroom, Tier Two responses, and how that might manifest itself differently at elementary level with some of the small group instructions or at the high school level with like rider time at Red River High School, all across the board, how we use our intervention one-on-one specialists with those schools that have title funding. All of that is rolled into here, both for the academic and the behavioral side of things. And so we earned a gold star, noteworthy practice there, which is something that we're really, really proud of. As far as improvement opportunities go, and I may be misspeaking, so Dr. Volmer will have to correct me, we are required, or Cognia is required, to give us three points to consider. Dr. Ralke did a little happy dance at the end of it because she said, these are things that are, action steps that we can implement quickly that actually we have in motion right now. We're not very far from making improvements on these actual standards. One is streamlining the goal-setting process. So we took a big swing at that. And according to the feedback that they got in those focus groups, we didn't quite hit the home run that we wanted. But we really want to make sure that when our teachers are setting their stretch goals and their PLC collaborative goals at the beginning of the year, that they align directly with your board-directed goals on student achievement. It seems like there were pockets in which that occurred and pockets in which it didn't fully execute. So that's something that we're going to dig into more comprehensively next year. As far as increasing student engagement, it's all about student voice and active participation. And Adriana can probably speak to this, that we want to make sure that kids are empowered to have choice, that the learning that they have is relevant, that there's transfer to real life ideally, that they're not just sitting in lessons to lectures like you're sitting and listening to me right now, right? They're talking about things, they're working with things and all of that, which is something that a lot of our buildings actually have in their priority initiatives, in their instructional models presently. And lastly, looking at how we are using digital resources. So we are a one-to-one district. We're blessed to have the board's support in that, that we have devices in the hands of every child. But are we using those devices in a manner that hits those higher levels of Bloom taxonomy, that kids are creating with them, that they're collaborating? It's not just a supplement to what used to be the, you know, the projector, and I'm now projecting the information, or now I'm just projecting it to you through a PowerPoint, right? That we're actually looking for kids to create and expand on their knowledge with those devices. And so we're going to be able to redig back into that. Again, that's happening largely, but not consistently across our district. And we haven't really dug into professional development around digital resources for some time now, so it might be time that we dust that off. Some of the additional things that we're proud of is that when you compare our overall scores with the average score of the Cognia Review Network, we have exceeded in all four of those indicators. So for the culture of learning, you can see that we hit the 4.0 mark versus a 3.2 Cognia Network average. Leadership for learning, 3.8 compared to 3.1. Engagement of learning, again, 3.8 compared to 3.1, and growth in learning, 3.8 versus 3.1. Those are really outstanding scores. And again, that goes back to the hard work that's taking place in every single classroom and the leadership of our building-level leaders. Our overall institution IEQ, which is the Educational Quality Index, is 310, and the network average is 296. And you can see there that this is the highest ranking that we could get, the highest categorical ranking that we could have received from a Cognia report. And this is given to districts that have not just evidence of improvements of practice in place and systems that would allow for high achievement scores to come to fruition, but also for districts that earn one of those gold stars or more, that there's really, what is it called, a noteworthy practice that is recognized by the review team. What's next for us? So what's happening as soon as, well, it's actually in motion right now, is that our building leaders are looking at their, what we call their operational plans, their academic operational plans at the district levels. Every year, Cognia requires every building to create a map of how they're going to move the needle on achievement, how they're going to move their needle on engagement. In this instance, we're going to align their next-year goals directly with the feedback that says that we have to dig into according to the Cognia report. So we are wrapping up this year's goals in the Cognia system, and we're going to launch next year's initiatives here before principals leave. We are going to make sure that we are aligning that those works with the newly drafted strategic plan. And within that, we have our B Legendary indicators as well represented in that plan as well as these. So you talk about the proverbial arrow alignment. We are doing our darndest to make sure that we're not adding extra, you know, sideways cars on this road here. We want to make sure everybody's moving together down the highway. And with that, both Dr. Volmer on the phone and myself will field any questions that you want to throw at us.
Before we open it up to board members, Dr. Volmer, is there anything you would like to add? We'll give you the first go. Otherwise, we'll make a pause in here a bit later for questions.
You know, yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity, first of all, to serve on the committee and the visitation team. It was a wonderful experience. I have a long history with North Dakota schools. I actually did my student teaching at Schrader Middle School back nearly 40 years ago, and always taken great pride in the Grand Forks Public School system. And want to commend you on the job very well done. You're doing what you need to do to meet the needs of kids, and it's evident in your performance on state assessments and on every measure that our team looked at. So very, very well done. And I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions for either Dr. Galach or Dr. Volmer from board members? I'm just curious, Dr. Volmer, if you remember a 12-year-old David Berger at Schrader? We might have passed in the hallway because I'm that old.
That's very possible. No, I do not remember that name, but you know, after all the years I've been in education, to be perfectly honest, when I don't remember a name, sometimes that's a good thing.
I would agree. Any final thoughts from board members? Reminder, this is under discussion, so no board action tonight, but appreciate your presence here and all of the work. Thank you very much. Five B, oh, sorry about that. Five B, presentation of RFP for District Athletic Apparel, Mr. Brandon Baumbach and possibly Mr. Mike Biermeyer?
Yes, quite possibly. Mr. Mike Biermeyer will be our main presenter. Just want to bring this forward as another example of really some creative thinking here coming out of our activities department, working with other school districts just to find ways to improve both service and keep the budget down. So without any further ado, our activities director, Mike Biermeyer.
Hey there. So how's everyone doing tonight? Just in case everyone's wondering, it's still windy out there. But so no, we'll get going on this. So just to let you know, what we're going to do is we're going to seek out some interest for an athletic apparel contract. This is something that we, as a department, have been watching for about 18 months. It's relatively new for high schools, but I'll say it's not new for higher education. So what is an athletic apparel? What we're doing is we're looking to leverage what we currently do, what we currently already spend to try and, we'll say, just get more for our dollars. I mean, we're all trying to figure out how to stretch our dollar a little bit more. So we've been watching some of our peer districts, and they've gone through this process. They're into year number two or year number three of a contract with a company and also a contract or a relationship with a specific brand, meaning Nike, Under Armour, Adidas, things like that. So there's a couple, there's a lot of different whys to do this. So one of the first and main things, though, to try and explain the why is, you know, like I said, is we want to try and get the biggest bang for our buck. Right now, if we contract out with a company, we're probably going to stand to gain anywhere near to 10% to 20% decrease in the uniforms that we do, just by the sheer volume that we do purchase with both of our high schools. That's not even counting our middle schools right now. A couple of the other things that we're seeing is when we leverage our dollars with companies like this, and then we know we're going to buy from them, there's incentives. As we continue to purchase more, they have incentives coming back that we can now purchase for things that we don't currently have a budget for. As an example, one of the big ones I'm looking at is middle school uniforms. Just so you know, we don't have a budget for that. So when we do purchase things like that, it has to come out of our middle school equipment. So sometimes they're deciding if they're going to buy basketballs or football shoulder pads, softballs. Some years, those go to the wayside and we have to buy uniforms. So that's, one of the big things is to help us figure out how we can better use the current dollars we're spending for high school, but help them at the middle school level where we can use those dollars for them. Another reason that I'm looking at is when we surveyed, I surveyed all of our coaches. We had 31 responses, our head coaches, 31 responses. So if you figure 31 coaches, they must all be buying from relatively the same place. And that's what I would have thought too. However, there are two major players that kind of do, that might do this athletic apparel contract. So we'll just call them Company A and Company B. Right now, we have nine coaches that buy from them out of 31. We don't have another company out there that gets more than one head coach purchasing. That means the rest of the 31 after that, they're all buying from some other company. Now, when we're buying from another company for not only uniforms but athletic apparel and equipment, the process of the PO request, the shipping, the receiving, all of that gets jammed up and it, it's like we constantly are reteaching on how to do this. It's a revolving door. So one of the other benefits of this is we can streamline that purchasing process, which will help a lot of people in this building and even our coaches. This, even though there is, we'll call it an exclusive contract with, we're going to find out who can give us the best deal. And it's the big hitters. It's the Nike, the Under Armour, Adidas. We'll find out who can do that. But what this doesn't do is there are some sports-specific items that these big guys are not going to be able to supply us with. And one of those big ones right now, flat out, is hockey. We are still going to be able to purchase from our local vendors on some of those situations, whether it's a hockey, cross-country is another one. So some of those little sports-specific ones, swimming's another one, that there's not a lot of companies out there that supply swimming uniforms and things like that. So even when I say there's an exclusive part there, we're really talking about our major sports of basketball, football, track uniforms, things like that. So when we look at the percentage of who we're buying from in town and who we're buying from out of town, I can honestly say, I'm not so sure that the percentage of us purchasing in town is going to drastically change. We're still purchasing from some in-town facilities. And like I said, of those 31, we drop out nine. We still have 22 that are using one single company out there. So I wanted to make that known that we're, and I've talked to our local vendors about this, and obviously, there's possibly going to be some dollars that are going to be, you know, put out to outside this city property. But a lot of those dollars are already going out there because, again, we have to find the best deals out there. So I guess in the end, you know, before I take any questions, I think this is, we'll see what happens. I'm excited for it. I like to be on the front edge of things. It's kind of like when you buy that new car, I'll buy like the second year that it comes out, not the first year. I just want to see what else happens there with some other districts out there. And we're finding that throughout the state of North Dakota and some of the districts that I know in Minnesota, they're really finding that this is working out well for their kids, not only financially for the district, but more options that they'll have. And one thing I also want to say is, when we work with one of these companies, we're going to have better options for our kids with some of those non-uniform things. We'll have school stores that'll be open up 24/7, where they can buy some apparel. They can customize it, give them more options for what they're doing. But again, we'll still be able to go to those local stores for those kinds of things. So we're looking at putting that RFP out, I think tomorrow. And we'll go through the process of that. And then end of the month, we'll open up the bids and see what we get. And then I'll come back to you. And that'll be the formal process of finalizing the bid. Questions?
Questions from board members from Mr. Biermeyer? Dr. Lund?
Hey there, Mike or Brandon. Will there be a group or a committee that'll look at these bids and come to the conclusion of this is the best one, or is it a committee of one or two?
So right now, the committee is going to be Brandon, myself, and then my two high school athletic directors, Tony Beena, Tyler Nelson. One of the things that we did find when we're opening up the bids from the other schools, what I learned was you really want to take a look at the quality of the bid. So really specific, one problem was, one school had a bid from Company A that was fantastic. When they looked into the bid of the uniforms, all the uniforms were stock versus custom, which isn't a problem, but they weren't game-ready. They didn't have a number on, they didn't have the logo on. They were just this piece. Well, now you have to add all those other expenses into it. So we're learning that, being able to really understand what are we looking at. And we've asked for those catalog numbers, per se, when they do it, so we can look at each product and understand, what are you bidding on and what are we getting? So kind of bring in our experts, per se.
Other questions? Oh, Dr. Hodak.
So when you're talking about you've put together these RFPs, the proposals, and I've heard you mention other schools. Are you talking about K-12? Or have you also visited with higher education and gotten their input as to what they would advise?
Yes, to some extent. So University of North Dakota, so I understand how their bid process worked and talking to the coaches, what to look for. And I'll say, on a higher ed level, there's not as much input at the coaches' level. It's, this is the best bid. So one thing I learned from them was really understand what the bid is. Don't get fooled by maybe some better dollars, but there's underlying costs. Reaching out to the K-12 schools, it's secondary, but hearing what Morehead State went through, what Concordia went through, what Baton Rouge, North Dakota went through. So I didn't talk to them specifically, but I heard from other districts by saying, this is the problem that happened in this university or college, but here's what went well over this one. So just trying to put it all together, what works best for us.
So help me understand the process just a little bit more, Mike. Will it come back to us? So the RFPs will go out? You'll get those companies to have a, I think the deadline was the 14th or something?
Yes. So we'll put that out there. They'll have 10 days. We will sift through those bids, and we will look at who we believe is, fits the best scope of this by the point system, which, just so you know, a couple of things that we're looking at in the point system is not only the pricing of it, but like I said, the quality, the personal service also. We want somebody in town that can be in our buildings, being able to service our coaches. So back to the process is, we'll look at those bids and we'll bring, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to bring the winner back to you and explain why they are the winner. And I'll let Brandon help me out on this.
Yeah, no, happy to just support exactly what you said, is that it's in your discretion, your authority for the bid process. Need to get it out there for at least 10 days, and we kind of sift through those responses and bring you an administrative recommendation. But that'll come back to you.
So those singletons, like, you know, within our own town, Drills and so forth, will they be allowed to make some of those bids as well?
They certainly will. And I had to have a conversation with Drills. And if it fits in their scope, then they will.
Okay. And will it be addressed, then, with anybody that we decide to go with a contract, that if they are unable to produce what we want, that we will not have to purchase from them?
Yes.
That is an important piece that needs to be in that contract. That is an important piece that needs to be in that contract.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, them coming to us with their response of what they'll do, they will forget that one. And I just urge us to make sure that we have it worded, that if something is not conducive to what we want or expect from a coaches, or from a student, parents, whatever we hear, that we do not have to purchase from them. That's all.
As they, you know, it's the lines in between, there's a line in here that says if they can't produce the product that we want, and again, let's be specific. If I want a specific bench, and they don't make it, we can go on to another vendor and buy that bench. So I hope, I had another example there, but I hope that answers the question.
Okay. Others, Mr. Clevin?
I may ask you to consider longer than 10 days. It's a lot of work to put these things together, and unless we have an absolute impending deadline to meet, I would offer three weeks. Consider extending the period longer than 10 days. It'll make your jobs easier in the end of it, too.
Definitely consider that, I'll talk with Brandon about this.
Sure, just as far as the direct response goes, you know, at this point, too, with the lead times to getting things published in the Herald, you'll notice that we have this published for Wednesday's deadline. That means we sent off some of the initial paperwork already. So in this case, we might have traveled a little far down that track unless we wanted to unwind that. We can always pull it back and start over. But it's certainly a good suggestion that's taken in mind here.
I will say that a couple of the vendors that have been used for North Dakota, Minnesota, in our area that we would recognize, I have reached out to them, understanding what they do with the other districts, and I asked them, is this a timeline? And they said, we have it basically in a punched-out system, and that would be okay.
Others, Dr. Lund?
I was just going to suggest, when we get the bids back, if we don't like the bids, we thought it was too short a time, you can reject the bids and open it back up. If you find that there's quality, or you find people that said, hey, I didn't get time to, there's always that opportunity. Until the board approves the contract, nothing's done.
Correct, and we certainly would certainly do that if that were the case.
Others?
I just have one smart of curiosity, I think maybe members of the public might be thinking this also. Exclusive contract, pick brand A, company C, whatever it ends up to be, does that apply to footwear, cleats, skates? And what do you do for an athlete who, yes, I understand that our district is under a under contract for exclusively X Y Z brand, company? Are we talking about socks on up, but we still allow athletes to, you know, use the footwear that fits? Does this fit kind of between the lines? Am I getting too much into the weeds?
No.
But if I had a high school or college athlete, and we were, you know, we were Adidas, but my basketball-playing daughter, that they don't work for her, just how that plays out?
Very good question, and it, for some reason, that it didn't come across to me as we should exclude footwear. It's literally put in there excluding footwear, and skates, and all those other peripheral things, gloves for a baseball player, you know, things like that. I went, I even circled that and talked to a few schools, like, we really are going to, like, not that we would or wouldn't, but it specifically excludes footwear. I'm like, well, makes sense, let's put it in there. So you're absolutely correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Again, this is under discussion, so we thank you for your time, and we look forward to you coming back at a future board meeting.
Will do, thank you very much.
6A is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in tonight's board packet.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Clevin, is there a second? Second by Mr. Manley, we'll take a roll call vote.
Lund?
Yes.
Palmisino?
Yes.
Flynn is absent.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
H S zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. 6B, consideration of application from Dakota Aircraft Corporation, doing business as Cirrus Aircraft for a property tax incentive in the format of a payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot program. So I believe we're going to start with Brandon Baumback, and we have some members here to come up to the podium, so you can make your way up unless you know that Brandon's going to take a while.
Now, thank you, President Berger, members of the board. My part in this is just to introduce our guests here this evening. Keith Lund, President and CEO of the EDC, joined here tonight by Steve Thomas, the Executive Director of Operations for Cirrus Aircraft. They have an exciting project that's coming forward. We had two members seated at the Local Government Advisory Committee, they're bringing this request forward, and ultimately, this ends up back at the city for a public hearing on June 2nd at City Hall. Keith, I'll let you do more of an introduction to the project.
Very good, thank you. President Berger, Superintendent Brenner, members of the school board. Mr. Baumback took just about all that I wanted to say in terms of introductory comments, but we are here to consider a payment in lieu of taxes application for Cirrus Aircraft, an exciting two-phase expansion, this is the first of two. Thinking back a little bit in terms of the story of Cirrus, they've been a partner in the community for over 30 years. Their first lease was 1996, as a matter of fact, their opening was impacted by the flood of 1997, so we were absolutely speaking with them 30 years ago, and I actually remember some of those conversations, so that tells you a little bit about me. They've got a number of expansions, so these tools that we're talking about today were used for both their initial facility, 67,000 square feet in 1996, 1997. In addition, it was a risky proposition back then, the city of Grand Forks issued a sales tax revenue bond and built the facility for Cirrus and leased it to them for the duration of that lease, and so a number of tools were used during that time. It was just a short 10 years later, or actually a little bit less than that, the demand for their aircraft had really expanded. Their waiting list was approaching about four years, and there was just a limit in terms of how long someone is willing to wait for, really a high craft aircraft like Cirrus produced. And they undertook a 93,000 square foot facility, more than doubling their footprint in Grand Forks. Again, the same tools are used, including a payment in lieu of taxes or property tax exemption. The city of Grand Forks uses a number of public financing tools to help support that expansion. A few years ago, Cirrus purchased the facility from the city of Grand Forks, so it's all locally owned by the company. They're now undertaking, as I mentioned, a two-phase expansion. Steve Thomas, who's Executive Director for Cirrus for Operations in Grand Forks is here. I'd like him to tell you just a little bit about what they're doing and why, and then I'll come back and just talk a little bit about what the request is and sort of the process moving forward.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening. Thanks to the board for having me come up and be able to talk about this project. It's something we're very, very excited about. And so here in Grand Forks, we are about max capacity for production at our facility. We're busting at the seams. If anyone has taken a tour of our facility recently, you could maybe see what we're talking about. And so when we look at our five-to-10-year sales demand, we need, we just need more space for additional tooling and equipment and things like that. So like Keith said, we looked at it from a two-phase, this first 30,000 square feet, it allows us to get the tooling we need for the rates that we're seeing, and it'll allow us to move some of departments into that space, so that whenever we do the second-phase expansion, we're not having to put a stop to production, we can continue to produce while we're doing Phase Two. So yeah, we, we're excited about the opportunity to expand in Grand Forks, and we see this as a way of ensuring that composite manufacturing remains in North Dakota. Can I, is there any questions that I can answer?
Questions from board members for either Mr. Thomas or Mr. Lund, or I see Mr. Fieland has also joined the chat. So questions for any of these three, and Mr. Clevin?
This came up in the Local Government Affairs Committee meeting. This expansion's not intended to add significant number of employment, but Phase Two would. And what's those general numbers of employees?
That's exactly right, yeah. So our capacity problem right now, it's more tooling than labor. So this first expansion will give us additional capacity, and so we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of five to 10 jobs, but we're looking in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 additional heads after the Phase Two expansion, because that really unleashes our ability to produce at the rates we need to. We look out seven to 10 years, we're going to need those people to produce at those levels. Yep.
Other questions? Dr. Lund?
Mr. Fieland, is there any appetite at the city to go back to the state legislature and get this law changed, so that you don't have to go to all the taxing entities like used to be in the past?
President Berger and Board Member Lund, I figured you'd ask that question. There never seems to be the right time to ask the question, so you know, as we said, I think the legislature put it in place in '17 or '19, and I think it was a bad example from the city of Bismarck in Burleigh County. And so as most things with the legislature, if there's a bad example, we all get locked into that. So we're, number one, I should say, I'm sorry, I don't know what was said, but we're thankful for Cirrus Aircraft. There are, number two, manufacturing, from an employment perspective, 500 people, it's quite incredible. One of the highest taxpayers in Grand Forks right now, they pay, I don't know, $215 to $225,000 in taxes, and so you're not going to find many taxpayers in Grand Forks that pay that much annually. And this keeps us here, and it keeps it expanding, and so you probably know this, but to find a manufacturer with 500 employees to fill this space would be awfully difficult with the kind of name that Cirrus Aircraft has. So we want to keep them here, we want to keep them growing, they're a great community partner. And I should say this, too. Grand Forks, we're honored to help lead this economic development process. I think we try to do four things, of which, two of which you're part of, okay? Number one, we work on tax incentives, like in front of you tonight. We work on infrastructure development. We work on banking North Dakota financing, we partner with our growth fund. And so two of those things we're going to do, this is an infill site, so we don't have a lot of infrastructure development, so we're not, we're thankful we don't have $20 to $50 million in infrastructure development to do it. The final thing is really what you play a large portion, and the reason why they have 500 employees from probably around 250 you've had before, is our community. And so we hope to be here with AgriSto coming up with a project that'll be game-changing, but we're going to offer all three of those to AgriSto, but the fourth reason is the qualitative reason why they're here, they like Grand Forks. We have a great culture, and part of that great culture is our schools, our public schools. And so you play a large role in that, Altru plays a large role, other community members. And if someone doesn't like the community, one of the AgriSto representatives, and I'll clean it up tonight, but he says, nobody from Belgium, because AgriSto is from Belgium, wants to go to a plant, and they have to tell their people at headquarters, you've got to go to XYZ plant to review it. And if they say, I don't want to go there, because I don't like the community, that's in part why we've got picked among all the other things. And I want to really thank the Grand Forks Public Schools, you're a large part of that last quotient, which is that community culture. Without the schools that we have, we wouldn't have the community we have. So I want to say thank you to all that, all that you do, and I want to thank Cirrus Aircraft, too.
Other questions, Dr. Lund?
I'm fully supportive of this, and I just want to mention that Mr. Fieland has officially become a politician, because he danced around the question and never answered it, but that's okay, because there isn't a real answer for it, so thank you, Todd.
You just worded out the city council meeting, so it's a friendly group here.
President Berger, just to offer a couple of comments here to the mechanics of these, because we don't get to hear about these things a lot, but a payment in lieu of tax is exactly that, a negotiated amount of money that's paid in lieu of the tax. In this case, it's meant to help, you know, support the expansion of Cirrus Aircraft. What you will not find in this agreement is going backwards in any way. In the state of North Dakota, you will always pay tax on the land, and the current property that's seeded upon that land, you'll pay full freight. So what this is, is freezing any increase with the increased investment on site, and it'll come on in 10 years now. That last slide kind of goes through those figures, just so you're aware of it, or the last page attached in the packet. But ultimately, here by supporting the investment and leaning in here, there'll be $130,000 value add by the end of this, and more, the lion's share of that will come to the school district at that time. So just wanted to remind you of the mechanics of the actual incentive at place.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I did, again, I'm fully supportive of this. This is great economic development, primary sector activity. But just to clarify, in the 10-year exemption that's requested, what's the dollar figure amount that the school district would forsake in the short term?
Well, to forsake it here, I don't know all that went into these projections here, but as Mr. Fieland mentioned, the current value is about $214,000, or the current tax that comes in off of that property is $214,000. Where at the completion of the project, it'd be $344,000. It may not be that simplistic to do the math on $130,000 added, but over that 10-year period, multiplying it by each year would give you the dollar amount.
So whatever proportional share of the increased value is what the school district would not receive in an annual allocation?
Right, $33,000 a year.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Manley?
I guess on line 20, well, it's page six, line 20, you go from a net income of $6 million, near $7 million in year one, to $13.8 million. So $6 million net increase. I don't see how it would be difficult to pay another, what did you say, Brandon? $30,000 to the schools?
Well, and just, and just to clarify here, so $30,000 to the schools, there's a little bit more for all taxing entities. And I think it's important to note that company can do well, and maybe even afford some of those expenses, but they would have some choices, and I think that's a part of what the city's trying to do, and economic development's trying to do, is to make sure that Grand Forks remains the top choice, just in defense of, you know, before you even get a chance to speak to the application.
Other questions?
As you can see on the cover memo, the administrative recommendation is to approve the pilot request of property tax exemption of 100% for 10 years. I would seek a motion to, it's been a motion to approve by Dr. Lund, is there a second? Second by Mr. Anderson, is there any discussion? Take a roll call vote.
Hodak?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Manley?
No.
Larson?
Yes.
Flynn is absent. Lund?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Palmisino?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, one absent.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
6C, South Middle School Title I Schoolwide Plan, believe this is Mr. Neal and Ms. Osgarden.
And actually, I'll do a quick little introduction for Mr. Neal and Mrs. Osgarden. So as part of the title process that we go through every year, as some of you are aware, South Middle School went off of title last year and now coming back onto title. They are a school-wide schooled, and typically, that's a process that they have to go through, but because of the short-term absence of title status, they are able to expedite that and go through it right away from the very beginning. And so I know I may be stealing some thunder from Mr. Neal and Ms. Osgarden, but since he was already recognized earlier today for all of the great work he does, I just had to mention that as well, too, from the title aspect. And so with that, I'll hand it over to these two to speak more on the process. So thank you for being here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baki. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Travis Neal, Principal at South Middle School. I also want to introduce Teresa Osgarden, the Title I Coordinator itself. Teresa's going to be going over our presentation shortly. But I do just want to give a huge shout-out to Teresa for all the work that she does revolving around Title I. If you remember, a bit ago, she won the Certified Employee of the Quarter, that was her. And this is just one of the many things, I talked about a jack-of-all-trades, so this is just one of the many things that Teresa does that makes South an amazing place to be, students, staff, and families. So as Mr. Baki was talking about, South Middle School is a school-wide Title I school. With that, it is designed to elevate the educational experience for all students. The comprehensive approach addresses both the academic and non-academic factors that contribute to student success. So for example, academic success, data-driven instruction, PD, family and community engagement. At South, we have two main pieces to our Title I, which is a student behavior interventionist that Ms. Osgarden will talk about, and then the Title- that Ms. Osgarden will talk about, and then the Title I Coordinator, which is what she does. So with that being said, here is Ms. Osgarden.
Thanks. So, yeah, Matt kind of told you a little bit about our history, so this is kind of where we've been for the last six years with South being Title I. The first year was back in 2019, we were considered a targeted support school because not every student technically qualifies for title, so the first year usually is a targeted and support the kids that qualify for title, and then the next year goes school-wide. So most of the schools in North Dakota are considered school-wide title schools. So you can kind of see, you know, throughout the years, we've been school-wide. When we started in 2022, we were actually considered a TSI school, which was a new program within the state as well, and then the next year, we were not Title I, but we were still TSI, and I'll talk about that here in a little bit, too, and then now we're not TSI, but we're still not Title I. So, we've been kind of going back and forth, but the nice thing is, over the last three years with Mr. Neal and I working at South, is we kind of keep it a tight ship of what we need to get done and what we need to do, and really look at data for that. So, this is called accountability pie chart. It is done every year at the end of the school year and then goes into the fall, so this was the data for 2324. What I did was, our school looks at, well, most schools and elementarys look at student engagement, student achievement in ELA, student growth in ELA, your math achievement, and also math growth in ELA, and also English learner proficiency growth with ARIDA scores. So, middle schools and elementarys look at this kind of criteria for the accountability part. High schools have more, because they do, you know, their GPA and graduation rates, and they have more things part of their accountability pie. So, what I did for you guys is looking at, because we were a TSI school for two years, so I looked at what our scores were last year, and then you'll notice we're in the blue, where it says a plus, for student engagement, plus 3.53. We actually gained those points back from 2022, 2023 school year to 2324. So you can see, we had growth in almost every single area. We knew that math was a huge area that we needed to improve on, we do have a math interventionist part-time that kind of helps and support, so you can see our student growth in math was huge last year. And so, we are continuing to move forward within all this data, just so we can keep moving and making progress. We are not a TSI school this year, we got off of it, but we do know that we still need to improve and grow, and so how do we make sure we don't go back to TSI? That's what we're trying to work on. So, last year, we created something called a TSI fishbone, and so we know that we can't fix every single area in our building, but we can focus on some different parts throughout the year. So these were the eight different areas that we looked at, where like, hey, we need to, we need to kind of hone in on some different areas, and it kind of ebbs and flows every year. If we have a huge staff turnover, then we have to look at our, you know, mentoring of our new staff and making sure that they're prepared and ready to go to be a South Spartan, you know? So it really depends on what's going on. If we have all of a sudden four new math teachers, then we have to, you know, show them how to use invisions within our math curriculum, so it's just that kind of process of staying up to date of what we need to do within our area. So, this is kind of a focus area for us, and then we always kind of revise it and look at it every year. So, I am a Title I Coordinator, that's one of the hats I wear. My big part of my job is looking at data, so looking at how do our kids, you know, if we're working with a math interventionist, what math supports do we need for those kids? What are the kids we need to pull? Do we pull the bubble kids that are almost proficient and kind of push them over the edge a little bit, it's like, yeah, we can get them proficient? Or, let's say, are you fly interventionists? We're looking at kids who need some more help and support with their fluency and their reading and their decoding, how can we help support that? So I use a lot of, you fly with my instructional coach and helping support our sixth graders right now with that. I look at all the STAR, I do the data assessments for, say, assessment tests, all those things. And, you know, just looking at this year alone, when we finish our state testing, we know we had the new NDA plus, we don't have our scores yet, we won't get them until September, October of next school year, but our kids worked really hard on their writing test, they worked really hard on the math and reading, so I'm hoping that the scores show their efforts, because they did really, really good on that. We do the parameter checks, we have a team called our SAT team, which is Student Focus, oh, sorry, Student Assessment Team, and so we really look at some different areas. So every week, it alternates between academics, behaviors, SEL, and also attendance, and so we look at those four different areas every month, and we rotate through them, so I do all the academic checks for my teams. And then also kind of helping supporting within my, I focus on eighth grade, Mr. Neal does sixth grade, and Mr. Lottis seventh grade, go to those teams during team times and look at what do kids need the academic week, what do the kids need on the SEL week, what do kids need for the attendance part, and what they need for behavior. So, we really work on our MTS process that way, okay? We also make sure all of our registrations and our scheduling of our kids, make sure they're in the right places, that's really important, especially if you have a class of really high flyers, really low flyers, like, how do you bridge that gap? And so, we make sure that we schedule our kids and support them where they need it. So, I also do a lot with our ML families, family engagements, and I also make sure all the Title I complacency and paperwork's all done on time. And then we do have Sally Akerlin, she's our behavioral interventionist, she does a lot with, sort of, justice with our students, any kind of conflicts they have, she works with behavior groups, check-in, check-outs with kids daily, she really helps a lot with our behavior plans with kids that are not on IAPs, too, because some of our kids need a little help and support in those areas, so she works with teams on that. She's great with communication with our families, she also does, as part of our SAT meetings, she does the behavior aspect of it, and then she does provide some tutorials for kids for active support, but also some SEL support as well. So, within our Title I, we use our budget for two positions, which is Title I Coordinator and Behavioral Interventionist. I always question at first, is like, you know, why not buy supplies and things you need? But if you don't have the people driving and backing, you know, what you want, you really don't get anywhere, so I really appreciate Mr. Neal's support in that aspect. And so I just wanted to show you, too, we do family engagement nights as well. This year, we tried to do a family STEM night, and so we know that our goals are math and ELA, and so Ms. Hovin is our instructional coach, she also incorporates some STEM within those different areas of math and ELA, so it was really fun to have the kids walking through the different sessions and groups, and our PTO provided the meal, we did taco bag for them, so it's always nice to feed kids and feed families as well. And then right now, I'm currently working on some different, like, take-home bags for our multilingual students, just because we know there's a lot of resources that they need as families within our community, like, you know, how does the bus and system work with the city, how about library, how about any kind of health, and, you know, where to go for different resources and those sort of things, and so we're trying to make some little to-go home bags for the summer to kind of give them some supports with that. And the last I just wanted to show you is, we do have also our BLEDGERY goals, I just wanted to share that with you. Like I said, we don't have our new NDA plus scores yet, but hopefully after this school year, we'll always get them live in May, so we'll always be on top of it of where we're at. We just finished our STAR testing last week, and so I was just going through the data with Mr. Neal, actually, early this afternoon, of how we were doing. So, we have some growth, and we have some weaknesses in areas, which is normal, and so we're going to continue working on that, okay? Any final words?
Yeah, no. Final words, Ms. Osgarden hit it on the head, you know, you can have programs all you want, but I couldn't find two better people, Teresa and Sally, to do what they do that directly impact kids and our staff and our families. So really, it's about how these two work, Sally Akerlin as well, they are truly amazing in what they do, and they drive the bus with this.
Questions for Mr. Neal, Ms. Osgarden? Mr. Clevon?
What's the attendance like at, what's the attendance like right now at South?
Yeah, the last I checked with Jalisa, our social worker, it was right at that 95%. Don't quote me that 100%, but it's close to that.
It's at least 95%?
And our social worker said it was the highest in, for the middle school, so she was pretty pumped.
Other questions? As you can see in the cover memo, the administrative recommendation is to approve the Title I Schoolwide Planning as presented this evening, I would entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved by Mr. Palmisino, is there a second? Second by Mr. Larson, any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Flynn is absent, Hodak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Clevon?
Yes.
Palmisino?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Thank you for your time tonight. Six D, the Finance Committee report, we'll start with Mr. Baumbach.
Yeah, President Berger, members of the board, talking through the last of our set of projects ahead of this summer in Wilder, I'm joined here by Chad Dustin, I believe, I can't see around the corner, but I thought I saw him sneaking, he'll probably help me just walk through exactly these bid results here. The cover memo articulates that the construction bidding came in strong, but throughout these projects, we also have learned we needed a little bit more in the budget for our FF&amp;E, as well as just owner contingency, and so you'll see overall, this is a higher number, and largely it's due to more allowances. If we don't use it, it comes back, but we've learned we need a little bit more room there. Furthermore, there was a robust conversation at the Finance Committee, there were two alternates discussed, the first was minimal and really had already largely been decided as far as removal of a front desk, but the second one was substantial, it had to do with adding additional parking spots on-site on the south side of the building, so there was a good conversation there. What you'll find in the board packet is minutes of the meeting itself, and then there's going to be two tables, just to remind you, Mr. Dustin is going to walk through the first of those, it has a little bit of color on it, and kind of take us through briefly in the bid results, but you can see them listed there, so if there's any questions at all related to those, you can. The second table, with a little bit more green than any other color, kind of puts in context the, all of the safety and security projects, because we're working from one budget, so we like to keep in mind, the green ones are the projects that have been to this body and the bid or guaranteed maximum price has been agreed upon, and then where you see less detail on the rest of that table, it's because the projects aren't completely dumb, done, they're in different stages of design, and then they won't be bid until later. The one thing I'd just remind on the front end of this conversation, too, this is not the largest, but one of the more complex projects within the safety and security bucket, because we're talking about adding additional classroom space, which would remove one of the portables or relocatables on-site, and that, for that reason, it's difficult to fit into one summer. So just a large time, or the overall timeline on this would be to add the shell of the building before the end of the school year, and then it could be enclosed, there's some administrative work to be done within the building, that'll have to be the focus of the summer, but then once they get that enclosed, the addition, they'll be able to complete that throughout the course of the year, so really wouldn't be able to move into that space but a year from this fall. Yeah, if you want to say something, oh, sorry about that. So, I mean, we'll go through a little bit of details, happy to stand for any questions. Here's Chad Dustin with Construction Engineers.
Yeah, thank you. So kind of, we'll touch on this, similar how we have been in the past, start kind of somewhat at the bottom and then work our way up. So, total project costs, as you're looking at there, previously was 2.7, currently at 3.1 and change, so up roughly $400,000 from what we had priced previously. As you can see, there's some of the soft costs, we didn't have values kind of allocated for a few of those items previously in our SD estimate or DD estimate that we finished, I think back in August sometime. So we, we're kind of basing it on some preliminary drawings, and, you know, for some reason, we should have probably had something figured in that originally, but knowing what, working with the district here and carrying the 3% FF&amp;E budget, as well as a 5% owner contingency for all these projects under the soft cost, that's what you're seeing there. One thing to note, too, is the design fee, so that's a fixed fee that the district is working with EAPC directly on. One item that you will see there, too, is an AE fee on alternates, so basically that's the fee that EAPC would get for designing of the Phase II alternate, which we're currently not, or not asking for acceptance on tonight, but for them to go through the design process of completing the design for that, for future information. So kind of moving up to, like, I'll call it the yellow line, the total construction cost, that's the total GMP that we would be asking for, for the project itself there. So as you can see, what we had from the last one to this one is up about $87,000, but as you're looking at the alternates at the bottom there, you know, there's roughly $130,000 between the add for the parking lot and the deduct for the reception desk that makes up the difference there, too. So, if we pull out the parking lot that we weren't planning on previously, total budget or total construction cost went down slightly, but adding the parking lot in there brought that a little bit over what we had figured originally, too, so. But I can answer kind of any other questions that you guys have related to this, just feel free to let me know.
Any questions for either of these gentlemen from board members? Dr. Lund.
Could one of you two explain what the Phase II, they got rejected, what that's about, and what's that entails for the, those that aren't on the Finance Committee?
Yeah, so Phase II, I guess I'll start with what Phase I entails first. So Phase I includes an addition off, I'll call it the east side of the building there, it kind of sits at a goofy angle, but the east side of the building, kind of the green space on the opposite side of the parking lot at Winship or Wilder currently, that addition would have the new admin space and one classroom, and then after we move admin into the new addition area, there's, we'd be renovating the existing admin space in, in the building currently and creating two additional classrooms there. So Phase I would be an increase of three classrooms in total. Phase II would be another addition to the south, adding two additional classrooms, or not to the south, to the north, adding two additional classrooms as well, too. With Phase I, we are removing one of the portables that's out there now currently, Phase II would include removal of the second portable, so.
Yeah, I would just add that in early conversations relative to safety and security of children, it's not ideal to have those relocatables in the middle of the day, they're crossing what could be an ice-ier path into the building just to use the restroom, maybe even a couple of times a day. And so, originally, we were, we did do some design work to get rid of relocatables, and that was primarily, you know, Wilder and then Viking, hoping to strike gold on the bids, knowing it's not likely, but at least now we have a design for that, and maybe for a future project, we can do that Phase II, and that's why it's referred to as such.
Questions or comments from board members? Mr. Palmisino.
I think one of the points we looked at by rejecting Phase II is that, that we have some other projects that are coming forward, that we want to get done first, and there's at least three more schools that are over that 1 million mark, and this Phase II could be done in the future on that. And I think, secondly, adding the parking lot gives them parking. Right now, a lot of the teachers are parking on the street in that, and there'll also be a, could be a drop-off lane within that parking lot, which would be to the east side of the school, so it would add more safety to the traffic around the school.
Yeah, and just to support that point even further, you know, drop-off can be a little hectic on that one way, if you get on the side where students can jump out right on the school side, that's not so bad, but a lot of families are relegated to being on the opposite side of the street and having to cross. With that turn-off lane, they can get off of fourth and come into the parking lot and then keep it flowing through. Additional 13 staff parking spots, a handicap spot, two visitor spots, so it'll, it'll increase even the on-staff parking pretty much from a third of the staff to two-thirds of the staff, so it doesn't get us all the way there, but it's fewer teachers having to park a block or two away and make their way to the school building.
Dr. Brenner?
Just a couple of additions. In 1997, I was the principal at Wilder Elementary School Finance Committee, heard me say this, but when FEMA came in and provided us with a budget to recondition and repurpose and rebuild Wilder, the parking lot in a drive-through loop on that end that Chad's talking about was part of the plan, but there wasn't enough funds at the end of the day, when all, you know, other buildings had needs as well, so that was cut out of the project. Secondly, Brandon, you might want to point this out on that final, final table page, when it, when we look at that overall amount, you know, 18 million was part of the referendum, we're at about 18,800, but I think it's worth highlighting some of the other future projects that are probably overestimated at this point.
Yeah, and I, thank you for that, Dr. Brenner, members of the board, it's, it's just worth re-articulating even from the beginning that these are at different stages of design a couple of years out, and so when you get to the bottom of that table and you have projects like Discovery and Community and Ben Franklin, you know, those are little ways out, in some cases not even designed for, so there was money held just to make sure, and absolutely make sure we wouldn't get to the end of a project and say, we can't do a school because of that. That's not on the table, it's not going to happen. In fact, what Dr. Brenner's referring to is every one of these projects has, you know, different contingencies built in, we're going to make sure we can fit them in, but I'd say even a little further, in the case of Discovery, we have a relatively new school that already has largely the main pieces of an entry sequence that would, you know, facilitate what is being installed in most of these other schools. So we're thinking that number's a little bit high. Community High School similarly has safety and functionally the same kind of entrance sequence. Also, it's a building that the school district doesn't own, so there may not be a need to put a lot of capital investment into a building that's owned by the state of North Dakota. So we think that as we near the bottom of the list, we're ticking off some of the more complicated projects and getting certainty around the budget early, and it'll work its way out in the second half of this.
Any other comments from Finance Committee members who were present for that discussion? Mr. Anderson, Mr. Larson? Okay, as you can see, the cover letter of the packet really addresses what was brought to the Finance Committee, but if you look closely at your minutes-- really addresses what was brought to the finance committee. But if you look closely at your minutes, the finance committee recommendation is to approve the guaranteed maximum price of 2.452 and change for a total project of 2.954 and change plus alternate three parking lot at 150,000 for Wilder Elementary School. That's the finance committee's recommendation to the school board. So I would seek a motion to approve the GMP of 2.452 and change for the total project as outlined, plus alternate three parking lot at 150,672. It's been moved by Mr. Palmasino. Is there a second? A second by Dr. Lund. Is there any discussion?
I'll just point out, I'm not personally involved in this project, but my employer is. But I don't feel a need to accuse myself with your consent. Our civil engineering role is pretty minor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Palmasino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Flynn is absent. Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion carries. Thank you both. 6E, appointment of Winship Elementary School principal, Mr. Matt Baki.
Thank you, President Berger, members of the board. It's my honor to present to you two recommendations for principalship appointments. But before doing so, I kind of want to walk you through the process of what that looks like as we go through the process of hiring a principal. And so the first process or the first step in that process is really opening the position. And so we had two positions that were open, both Winship and Sentry. After which, when we open it, we do send a message out to district personnel, staff at the building level, and then also families. And that survey is basically that message that goes out as a survey to basically ask for the characteristics, the attributes, and the skills that a position or a person with a principal position should entail. And so really asking them to identify what are we looking for in a principal for that school. Winship received over 60 responses and Sentry received over 70 responses. Those survey responses are then used to correlate and put together the interview questions and the direct, what I call the five key characteristics that we're looking for for each principal. Those five characteristics are sometimes similar between candidates, but also sometimes very different. And what I will say is there were differences between Winship and what they were looking for than what Sentry was looking for. And that will gear the questions that are used in the interview process. And then as we go through that interview, the interview team is asked to basically rank those individuals based on those five key characteristics that they are looking for in a principal. And so parents have a say in that process of really what I would say is identifying what we are looking for. What are we looking for when we are looking for a principal? What are the key characteristics, qualities, attributes that we are looking for? And so parents play a key role in identifying that process. Then we go about and we develop a hiring committee. And that hiring committee is put together with district personnel as well as building level administration to identify who are our key stakeholders, our key leaders within our building to put together that process. That is made up of both district personnel as well as building leadership. And they are really responsible for choosing the right fit for the building. And that's an important role and it's an important process when we go through that. So we developed that hiring committee. I ask, go through the process. They commit to that process and being a part of that. Then after at that point, we narrow down the candidates. Once the position has closed, we narrow down the candidates. And I will say that we had a very strong pool in both the Winship and the Sentry position. We had a total of 18 candidates for Winship and we had a total of 12 candidates for Sentry. Altogether, we had 22 candidates for, between the two positions. We felt very good about our candidate pool as a result of the candidates we did receive. At the end, we ended up interviewing six people for the Winship position and we ended up interviewing five because of a late cancellation on the Sentry one. We had a six one scheduled, but ended up canceling due to some personal reasons. And so we felt very good about our candidate pool as far as both principal positions. I do set up a meeting with the interview team to go through just kind of, they receive a very thick packet, which includes all of the data and the survey results. So they get the raw data of what the survey said. They get a summary that I provide that includes all of the five key characteristics and other points to look for when they go through the interview process. They also receive the packets of each candidate. And they receive kind of what to look for, which includes their letters of recommendation, their cover memo, all of those types of things. Also, through that process, they receive, again, back to that survey, really what should we be looking for in each column. So when we go through the interview questions and we characterize the top five characteristics or qualities we're looking for, they're provided look fours of what they should be looking for in each question. Additionally, it has a schedule for the day and all of those components that we go through and we really talk through at that interview team. Now, I want to walk you through the day of what the interview looks like. Really, the process started at 8:00 AM. And when I talk about the Winship interview process, we had six individuals that we interviewed. The interview team did not walk out of Winship, which was held on April 30th, a Wednesday, didn't walk out of the building until about 6:00, 6:30. So they were there in interviews from 8:00 AM all the way till about 6 o'clock, doing interviews the entire day. It was quite a process and quite a feat. So I want to thank those individuals that were part of that process. As far as Sentry, again, we had it set up for six interviews and we ended up having five interviews. Again, they walked out on a Friday, May 2nd. They started at 8:00 AM and they ended on May, about 5:00, 5:30. So again, quite a commitment to be part of that process and I want to thank those individuals. I also want to talk about what it's like for a candidate to walk through that process. When we go through that process, a candidate, I ask the candidate to come in a half hour early. So the first candidate comes in at 8:00 o'clock. They are given a scenario. And that scenario is a real life look at what it's like to be a principal. And so they walk in at, you know, 8:00 AM in the morning and they need to find coverage. They have an IEP that they need to attend. They maybe have a phone call from a parent or they have a staff member that needs a personnel issue item that they need to work through. And so they're given this scenario with multiple different things that are come to their plate right when they walk into the to their job on the day. And they're asked to prioritize what's that going to look like. And so when they walk into the interview, so they have about a half hour to kind of go through that process and put together their thoughts of what they would do in these scenarios. Then when they come into the interview, a half hour later at 8:30 was our first interview, that's their first question. Their first question is tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the position. And the second one is tell us about how you prioritize this scenario. And that really walks us through their thought process, how they are going to manage their building and their staff and work with their families and their parents. And so it really gives us a good look at what we are getting from a candidate when we go through that process. And then we just throw about 22 to 24 questions at them in an hour, and they're only given an hour. So they have to be succinct and they have to go through this process quite rapidly, well being able to sell themselves. Actually, this year I had three candidates after their interviews go, whoa, that was intense. And so when I have candidates tell me that, where I feel like we have very highly qualified candidates tell me that, I feel like we're doing something right when we go through that process. And so I'm telling you all of this because it's important for you to understand the process that we go through is quite intense, but also I feel like it brings the top candidates to the surface. At the very end is what I would consider the best part of their day, is they get to, for the last half hour, so their interview process is a two-hour process. At the last half hour, they get the opportunity to go through the building tour with the students. And so we have two or three or four students who are just beaming when they walk out of that interview, who are ready to sell their school and sell what great things they have going on in the building. And that's what the students get to do. They get to sell and be the cheerleaders and wave the flag for whatever school they're at, whether it's Winship or Sentry. They really take that seriously and they introduce themselves. They give a firm handshake. They look you directly in the eye. And then they take you through the building. And it's really cool to see not only the students rise to that occasion, but also to see the interactions between our candidates and our students. And you can truly see the candidates that love being around students and really is why we do what we do. And so I just want you to understand that process. Then after that, we go through and we narrow down our candidates. I do the reference checks. They meet with Dr. Brenner. And tonight, I'm providing you two very highly qualified candidates that I'm excited to introduce to you. And so with that being said, and I can go through all of that, or if you have various questions on that, I can go through that again. But today, I'm going to recommend to you Mrs. Lori Scadham as the new principal of Winship Elementary School. And I'll ask Mrs. Scadham to come forward here for us. She brings 13 years of experience in education, all within Grand Forks Public Schools. Her current role is a special education coordinator. Lori has led multiple programs and portfolios across our district. But managing really the early childhood special education teachers, speech, language pathologists, and then other specialists within our special education realm. When looking at her background, it proves that she is providing direct support to students with diverse needs and abilities, really providing opportunities for all students. The interview team identified several key strengths that she will bring to Winship, which includes a deep knowledge of early childhood, her experience managing complex systems on multiple sites, and her strong organizational skills as a special education coordinator. Really working with multiple students, families, and teachers. And I highlighted this in one of her references. And what I will say about this is this was an unsolicited reference who said this about Lori. And this is one of her current teachers that she supervises. She is a gifted leader who exhibits the traits needed to foster an effective team with the convictions to guide a team. It just speaks highly to what she does, not only in Grand Forks Public Schools, but what she's going to do over at Winship. In the memo, you also see that I've articulated who made up that team. We have seven Winship staff members representing both teachers, paraeducators, literacy specialists, librarians, administrative assistant staff. So you'll see both classified and certified that participate in this process. And then you'll see various district representatives, which include a building principal that they will work with, the special education assistant director, the chief academic officer, the multilingual coordinator, primarily because we know that Winship has a huge ML population and having that voice at the table is crucially important. And then the human resource director. And with all of that being said, the administrative recommendation is to appoint Mrs. Lori Scadham as the next principal of Winship Elementary School. And I'm very excited to do so. I will stand for any questions you may have. And Mrs. Scadham is here today.
Questions for Mr. Baki? Mr. Clevin?
Is the recommendation the same as the recommendation the committee made?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Baki? Dr. Lund?
Maybe not for now, but I would be interested in hearing about the onboarding process for a new principal, assistant principal, associate principal. I don't think I've heard much about that for quite a few years. So not now, but down the road sometime. It'd be interesting because we've heard a lot about teacher onboarding, but I don't know if I've heard a lot about administrative onboarding, so.
Can I just highlight some things just very quickly for you? Just because I think it is, and I think you heard a little bit about it earlier in the year when we had our Ben Franklin celebrating success as well, where they did talk about just that process. Mrs. Skarperud touched on it a little bit. It may look a little bit different than what we've done in years past since myself coming to the Grand Forks Public Schools. And so it may look a little bit different than maybe what has been done previously. But we do set up our new administrators with both a state mentor and then an in-district mentor. And so we provide them that opportunity to grow with counterparts across the state, utilizing our NDCL organization to do that. They go through that process and actually they'll go through that process for two years. Mrs. Skarperud will go through the second year this year, or I should say next school year. And so Mrs. Scadham and Dr. Larson would go through that process as well. Additionally, on top of that, I do meet with them, I meet with all of our elementary principals on a monthly basis. Both the new principals, I go through and actually meet with them twice a month and provide that additional support. So that means basically they're meeting with me every other week to discuss items that are coming up throughout the year. Additionally, on top of that, on the off weeks where I am not meeting with them, I set up what I call leadership labs. And these are leadership opportunities for our new administrators to really talk to the experts in the field. And so what I do is I set up, maybe it's a, they're struggling with IEPs and their role on the IEP process. So I'll set up either Brandon Vander Voort or Dr. Alyssa Dietrich to come in and talk about the IEP process and what that looks like and what their role is. Or maybe they're concerned about safety and security within their building. So I'll bring in Daily Wilkinson to talk through that process or communications or whatever it may be that they've identified, hey, this is an area of growth for me or an area I want to learn more about. I think Mr. Bombach has come in and done some of those on the budget aspect of things, or Dr. Norwood on the Title I process. And so really every other week, they're meeting with not only myself, but then also what I would call an expert in the field to help provide those opportunities for continued growth through that first year. Because as we know, just like teachers go through the growth process as a first-year teacher, also administrators go through that process. Absolutely, yep.
Other questions for Mr. Baki? Seeing none, I would seek a motion to approve Mrs. Lori Scadham as the Winship Elementary School's principal for the 2025-2026 school year at a salary of 110,396, an education factor of $3,600, and a school factor of $2,000. It's been moved by Mr. Clevin. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Lund. Any further discussion? Take a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn is absent. Clevin?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Palmasino?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
6F, appointment of Sentry Elementary School principal, Mr. Baki.
All right, I'm going to go through that whole process again. No, I'm just kidding. I am excited for the opportunity to also introduce Dr. Holly Larson. And she is not here today. And one of the reasons she's not here today is one of her other roles that she serves or that she participates in is she actually serves on the school board over in East Grand Forks. And so that's where she's at tonight is serving in your role as a school board member. And so she does apologize for her absence tonight, but she had to fulfill that role as well too. So my opportunity to introduce Dr. Larson. Currently, Dr. Larson serves as the associate principal over at Valley Middle School. Her prior leadership roles include behavior interventions coordinator and building resource coordinator at South Middle School. She also served as a building behavior strategist at South Point Elementary School in East Grand Forks and a school counselor at both the elementary and middle school level. Dr. Larson brings a deep understanding of the MTSS process and has led the development of the school-wide procedures and protocols to support student success, and I would say all students. She has a significant experience with the Witten Wisdom curriculum and has served on the ELA administrative designee supporting both instructional planning and implementation. And reminder, Witten Wisdom is the new ELA platform or curriculum that we're going to be going into next school year. Dr. Larson demonstrated a clear passion for supporting students with diverse needs and abilities. Her strong communication skills and thoughtful approach to building relationships have continuously led to positive outcomes for both students and staff. The interview team identified some key, several strengths for Dr. Larson, including her identity as a lifelong learner, her ability to approach challenges using data and system thinking, and her strong foundation in putting students at the center of decision-making. The interview team, which was led by myself, included 10 Sentry staff members, I did say 10, teachers, paraeducators, literacy specialists, multi, or ML education, special education and administrative office staff. It also included five district representatives in elementary building principal, the special education director, the elementary MTSS coordinator, the ONCORE director, and the human resource director. Again, a pretty large team as we go through that process. And so we've had many stakeholders involved in that. With all of that being said, it's my distinct honor to recommend the administrative recommendation is to appoint Dr. Holly Larson as the Sentry Elementary School principal for the 25-26 school year.
Questions for Mr. Baki? I would seek a motion to appoint Dr. Holly Larson as the Sentry Elementary School's principal for the 2025-26 school year at a salary of 117,523, an education factor of 5,000, and a school factor of $2,500. It's been moved by Mr. Anderson. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Hodak. Any discussion?
Is there precedent for Minnesota residents to have this kind of administrative role?
Can you expand on?
I assume she's a school board member in East Grand Forks. She's a member, she lives in East Grand Forks.
Correct, yep.
And have we done that before?
To answer yes, we have quite a few of our administrators and staff that are residents in Minnesota.
Other questions? Take a roll call vote.
Clevin?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Palmasino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Flynn is absent. Hodak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
HS? HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Dr. Larson, if you're watching this later, congratulations. 7A, announcements.
Just have one, when we go to the Career Impact Academy, after this, actually, this meeting continues, over there, please park in the brand-new South parking lot. If you park right in the middle of the South parking lot, there's the main entrance. It just doesn't have a door number yet, but that's where we're going to enter, and Mr. Ripley will be there to greet us. Thank you.
Any other announcements? 7B, board requests for future consideration. Mr. Palmesino?
It isn't a future consideration, it's more of a concern. Ben Franklin Construction on South 11th, they're putting a water main in down South 11th, right south of Ben Franklin School, and I think we, somebody needs to just maybe visit with engineering to explain it to contractor, because today he tried to block the road off at a quarter to eight, when that's the area where 300 kids get dropped off to go to school. And if they would just understand that if they would do, have a coffee break at a quarter to eight until 8:15, and one at 2:45 until 3:05, they would have no kids coming, but it seems they're always doing something during those times, like they haven't figured out that all these kids are getting out of school. I know today it got to be very hectic with parents driving around the barrier. One parent drove up on the grass, onto the blacktop to drop his kids, so I think we just need to express to the, and you would hope the city engineering would have already explained this to them, but it doesn't seem like that's happened.
Dr. Brenner, you're nodding. Mr. Baki, you're nodding. You'll get that. So by future consideration, you mean by tomorrow morning? Yes. Other board requests for future consideration? 7C, school board meeting norms. Mr. Clevin, how did we do? Fine, he says. So you can notice under Agenda Item 8, we are simply recessing this meeting, and we will reconvene once we've all made our way inside the Career Impact Academy, and then we'll follow along. 9A will receive a tour, and then we'll adjourn at the conclusion of that tour. So this meeting is now in recess.